Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The microphones are on, the cameras are rolling. Good evening and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. And of course, a public hearing on the proposed TIF III in the city of Geneva. We're going to begin with the public hearing. I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Marks. We'll do that at the council meeting. Second to by...
Sir?
Yes.
Can we do roll call first before we...
We're going to do a roll call to open the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. This is the public hearing. We're going to have a council meeting following this. So the motion was by Marks. The second was by Alderman Cummings. A roll call vote is in order.
Ron Singer.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marks.
Aye.
Jim Radecki.
Aye.
Marisino.
Aye.
Tom Simoneon.
Aye.
We have a full house this evening. Just a reminder to the city council and the ladies and gentlemen joining us live and those tuning in, tonight's public hearing is indeed that. It is an opportunity for the city council to hear comments from residents, business owners, or anyone else who has an interest in the proposed TIF. It is the city council's desire to ingest the information and/or questions provided tonight, to then digest that information between now and June 13th, which is a Monday evening, at which the committee of the whole will meet to consider what action to take regarding the proposed TIF III at the committee level. And then immediately following that committee meeting, a special city council meeting will be held to formally consider the proposed TIF III. Any questions or comments?
The actual name is...
Oh, for technical purposes, of course, the actual name is the... Give my eyes here. The Geneva Fox River Redevelopment Project area. The public hearing is open. Would anyone like to speak? Kathleen?
First, we want to enter into the public record that public notice was...
Kathleen, could I trouble you to identify yourself for the record as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. Kathleen Timoshenko, Economic Development Director, the city Geneva. We wanted to enter into the public record that the mail notice was sent to the taxing districts by certified mail on March 23rd, 2016. We published the interested party registry in the Daily Herald on April 4th. We mailed notices to the 750-foot limit in interested parties on April 1st. The published legal notice in the newspaper on April 20th and again on April 21st. And we mailed notice to all of the taxpayers of record within the district by certified mail on April 18th. We do have a presentation of the findings of S.B. Friedman that we'd like to present prior to asking for public comment, if that would be okay?
Absolutely. Please do. And for our benefit, sir, if you could also identify yourself, who you represent, and your address.
Absolutely. Glad to be here, council. My name is Jeff Dickinson. I'm with the firm of S.B. Friedman Development Advisors. We're an economic development consulting firm out of Chicago. And the city has retained us to conduct the eligibility study to determine whether the area qualifies for designation as the TIF. And then we've collaborated with staff to develop the redevelopment plan and project. So it's a two-part report that you've been given. It's been distributed and published and all those good things. There's an eligibility study and then a kind of a guiding plan for the proposed TIF. As I think all of you know, TIF is a body created by city councils, so the guidance that we've given or are given is from state law. Our findings are based on state law and our experience with TIF designations and TIF eligibility studies, but ultimately, the action to create a TIF is in the hands of city council or any local governing body. So as Kathleen said, I'd like to walk through just some of the key findings of our eligibility study, as well as a little bit about the TIF plan. Briefly, for the good of the audience, probably more than the council, the summary of tax increment financing is that it's a vehicle, an economic development tool, to be used in a defined area to capture increases in value, the taxes from those increases in value, and reallocate them. It's the Tax Increment Reallocation Act. Reallocate those taxes from the increases in value into a fund. That fund is controlled by city council, and you choose how to spend that money to best facilitate the redevelopment in the area to meet the city's goals and the broader goals of tax-based growth and economic development for all the taxing bodies. So the city is the steward of this district that they create for the good of themselves and the other taxing bodies to make sure the area is what you want it to be. These districts last 23 years by state law. So that's the, you know, if you adopt it, you've got a 23-year lifespan to engage in this reinvestment, focused reinvestment effort in this area, in the proposed Fox River area. Now, the map here shows the study area. It's on both sides of the river. Majority of the study area is on the east side of the river, but it does cross to the west. You know, landmarks, the old bottling plant at the northwest corner. You know, I think it connects, I guess notably, to TIF II to the east, which exists here. And it, to some extent, crosses over with the old TIF I area that was in the downtown, but expired some years ago. It's, I guess it's a mixture of some right-of-way. There's a lot of river here, obviously, but that's, we treat that as a right-of-way in the way we draw boundaries. We think that's the right way to do it. It is a right-of-way, right, if you have a boat? So that's one way to approach how to draw a boundary. It's not really material. Obviously, the city isn't probably going to spend any money to fix up the Fox River itself, per se, but that's the way that boundary got drawn. I think that's the kind of the oddest bit of the way the shape is drawn. Just briefly on how we got to our findings. As I mentioned, there is state law describing the conditions that must be found to create a TIF district. We take our homework very seriously. We looked at every single parcel in this area. In this case, we actually looked at them, some of them, a couple of times because the boundary changed over time and at the city's direction. We revisited that homework as recently as late last year to make sure we were current on the facts on the ground. Photographed everything, took field notes. We have notes on all of our findings, so we have a pretty, we're very comfortable with the facts that we found and the documentation thereof. We do gather data from other sources, from the city, from the county. And then we map those things. One of the key things you've got to find when you make a TIF eligibility finding is that factors of eligibility are distributed throughout the area. You can't just have a pocket of troubled area and then the rest of the district is okay. So you have to look at it spatially, and we do that. And as you've seen from the report, there are maps, and they're describing where we found these conditions to be present. So we looked at distribution. We made sure that those factors are meaningfully present. You can't, again, you can't have one or two problems. You need to have a pattern of substantial problems within the area to make that factor, to make the finding that the factor is present. You can find one of two different kinds of TIFs when you have improved area like this. You can have a blighted area. That's where you have five or more factors from the state law, list of 13, present in a substantial way. Or the lower standard is a conservation area. What we found here is a conservation area. In the law, it says that's an area that's at risk of becoming blighted. So it's got some of the indicators. You're starting to get worried a little bit, basically. Could this get worse? Could this area become blighted? Maybe the city wants to intervene. That's essentially that lower standard. And again, that's what we found here is a conservation area, not a blighted area in the downtown. You've got to have three of the factors, and you've got at least three. And at least half of the buildings have to be 35 years old or older. So an older area, obviously, if things are new, that's probably not a place you need to intervene too preemptively. But here we've got older buildings, many of which have not seen a lot of reinvestment, and at least three of the factors. Specifically, we found four. So again, that's one more than we needed. Those are the four, and I'll walk through those in detail next. So here's the age finding. Again, we got data from the county on building age. Three-quarters of the buildings, and again, this isn't a surprise, in old downtown, you all know this, but we do have the specific facts. About 75% of the buildings are over 35 years old. Again, not earth-shattering news to those of you who've lived in Geneva for a long time. Lack of growth in the EAV, this is one of the factors that I think is the most compelling when you look at a TIF eligibility study. First of all, it's evidence and information from the county assessor's office. We just do math on it. So this is a math problem, basically. Does the math meet the standards in the law? There are three different ways you can find eligibility via lack of growth in the EAV. If you look at the red shaded rows, the first one is, have there been declines in the values in this area? The answer is yes, for all five of the periods analyzed, last five periods for which there was data, complete data, or four-year, five-year-to-year periods, so it's six years total of data. It's declined each of those years. So you have to find three out of five of those is the minimum. Again, we've got five, so it's substantially more than you need to make a finding of lack of growth in the EAV. Secondarily, is growth in the area, value growth, property value growth, growing less quickly than the consumer price index? The answer, again, is yes for all five of those periods. Is it growing slower than the balance of the city? For four of the five periods, it also meets that test. I think that is the most compelling test. Again, those are all, any of those three would be sufficient to make the finding. But the big one for me is, in this case, the rest, it's not keeping up with the rest of town. That's the real takeaway. Your tax base collectively is growing faster than this area. And that is the best indication, this is a potentially troubled area, one at risk of becoming a drain on your tax base and the other taxing bodies' tax bases. So if this keeps shrinking, that's not good for anybody without intervention. So that's, again, legally speaking, any of those three would cut it. You've got all three, and the most compelling is the third of the three findings. For me. You know, that's a matter of opinion, I suppose. Deterioration. Deterioration, again, as I said, we looked at every property. We photographed every property. You've got to find it to be more than basic maintenance. So if you've got a peeling paint on your house, that would not have triggered a photograph or a finding. And you can find it for other buildings or site improvements. So that would be either buildings or roads, sidewalks, driveways, other things. The law allows for either of those things. We did not find a lot of building deterioration. That is true. We found it on some parcels, but not the preponderance of them. But between site improvement deterioration and building deterioration, over 80% of the parcels had that. And again, you can see it's on almost every parcel in the study area. So we've got a substantial amount of deterioration here. The third factor we found was inadequate utilities. In the law, these are utilities that are either insufficient, in need of a replacement or absent. Again, you've got a substantial amount of infrastructure here. We got information from the Public Works Department. They provided us data at the block level, which blocks needed improvements to the water infrastructure, sanitary and storm. More than half, comfortably more than half, 60% or more of each of those different types of infrastructure is in need of improvement. I know the city's, you know, taking care of their infrastructure, but they've got a lot of infrastructure base to deal with. And so it needs substantial improvement, again, across the study area. Excessive vacancy is buildings that are either unoccupied or underutilized. That's the standard in the law. We looked at, again, every building. In a typical retail environment, you'll see vacancies of 5% to 10%. In this market, it's, you know, somewhere in that ballpark. That's a healthy shopping center, a healthy commercial district. We've got over a quarter of the total square footage is unoccupied or underoccupied. There are particular problem buildings, as I think you all know, the Mill Race Building, the bottling plant. But there are underutilized and vacant buildings throughout, you know, along State Street. They're in various parts of the district. So again, we found it to be reasonably distributed, and 25%, 26% vacancy is quite a lot. We could have found it, but we did not have the data for persistent vacancy or other things. This is just sort of conditions at the time we took the homework. That's, that was the way we could conduct the analysis with good information, so that's what we did. So in addition to finding the factors, these problem issues are present and meaningfully present and reasonably distributed. You have to ask other questions of yourself before you adopt a TIF. One of them is sort of a backward-looking question. Have we seen investment, substantial reinvestment, without public intervention? Is this place fixing itself, really, is the question? Is it getting better? Do we need to, you know? You shouldn't take intervention lightly, I guess, is the point here. We see the declining EAV, the tax base, as a key indicator here. And there is permit activity, but not a lot of it. There is limited permit activity. We know that the city's got ambitions from planning exercises for substantial transformation in a lot of this area, and we're not seeing that historically or in recent years unless there was TIF activity or TIF involvement by the city previously. The second question is a forward-looking question. This is, again, this is probably the most important question from a council person's perspective, in my opinion. You know, this is the one, if we don't do anything, will it redevelop in the future? You don't want to put a TIF in place if you believe substantial redevelopment can occur as envisioned by the city without intervention. If you think it's just going to happen, let it go. You know, that's, let it happen, let it be its own thing. We don't believe it will redevelop, based on the experience, the infrastructure, you know, challenges here, and the ambitions for the city here. We don't think that meeting of the minds is going to be able to occur without the tool. And that's why we think it's responsible to consider adopting a TIF here. So those are the biggest ones. You have to have a contiguous district. They have to be expected to all reasonably benefit from the district. We believe those are true. It's got to be consistent with the planning documents the city already has, land use policy, essentially. You know, TIF is not intended to make land use policy. It's a tool to implement the policies you already have. Those are pretty clear. And this, again, is consistent with that. And it can't be too small. That's not a problem. So the plan then goes on to describe, provide some guidance for how the tool should be used. And there are ways you can spend the money. You can help redevelop vacant and underutilized buildings, property assemblies. City has a lot of flexibility, infrastructure improvements. It can be either public or private investment would be, and again, that's, there's a lot of deference given to local control. You know best what you need to do. The primary guiding document for that spending is the budget. The budget in a TIF district is not a levy. That's probably the most important point on this slide. You are not obligated to spend 15, or I'm sorry, $30 million. That is the most you could spend. You are future councils over the life of the district. So over 23 years, you could not spend more than that. What this budget does is it lays out all of the uses of funds that are allowed under And if a project comes forward and asks to use that money, either a city project or a private project, you have the flexibility to approve that. You are, again, a future council, could do that. So if you hadn't included hypothetically, cost of construction of public works, that would be a foolish thing to leave out of a TIF budget. But if you did, you wouldn't be able to fix your infrastructure with TIF money. So that's what this document, basically, or this aspect of the document says. The city council can spend the money as they see fit. Those line items, the actual values are not that meaningful. As long as you don't exceed the ceiling, you can move the money around between line items. So if it's $9 million of public works and whatever, $1 million of building rehab, in that case, it would be an acceptable use of funds, as long as you don't exceed the overall ceiling. So this gives, I think, an expectation where I would think the money would need to be spent, based on our experience working in downtowns. But if something comes forward, you have flexibility under these line items to spend the money differently. So again, it's not an obligation to spend, it's a ceiling. I think that's, again, the key here. The future land use map, we've essentially covered every land use map, every land use we could think of except industrial, really. So again, there's a lot of flexibility. If we had left out residential, for example, then you could not use TIF money to support residential development. That would have been dumb. We didn't do that. But your land use policy exists already. So this is not, again, a particularly meaningful map, but it is required in the TIF law. So we have your ability in the downtown area, in the Fox River TIF area, to spend the money on really any reasonable land use that could come forward and seek assistance, either directly or indirectly from the city. To give you a sense, again, the law requires that you include the current amount of value in the district. This is about $7.5 million of equalized assessed value. And then it requires a projection of what you think the going-out value will be. So again, we don't have, you know, there are no projects that we're aware of that have come forward. If we, we've done these kind of projections where it's a single site and we know what the project's going to be, we can get a pretty good answer. This is a much more speculative projection of $26.5 million. But it really expects substantial revitalization, transformation, and bringing some of those buildings that are underutilized back into productive use. $7.5 million is, obviously, that's the amount of value that will be sort of the cap. So the taxes on that $7.5 million will continue to flow to the other taxing bodies as they do now. If the value were to grow to 26, the taxes on the $19 million, I mean, that would happen over time, those are the taxes that would be your source of funds for the TIF district. But again, that 26 is a very preliminary projection, I would say. That's sort of the summary, the highlights. I'm happy to, I guess, are we doing questions from the council, or are we going to hold off on that?
We're going to hold off on questions from the council.
I'm not sure. However you want to do it, I'm happy.
We've decided to do that.
We'll do it that way? Okay. Thank you.
Will he be back?
Yes.
And we're voting the night that he's back. I can't, I have questions. Then I saw that.
Well, again, we want to hear from those who have comments regarding the TIF.
At some point, I have definitional questions that I don't want to wait until the night that we're voting to get those definitions. I apologize, but I don't want to get into pros and cons, but I do need definitions. I can email those out if you prefer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dickinson.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else?
Can I have a point of order?
Yes, sir.
A question on, to piggyback with, Don just said, on the 13th, can that be tabled? Are we obligated to vote on the evening of the 13th? Or can that be tabled in the event that we need more time on our end, based on what's presented on the 13th?
Well, the information presented on the 13th, as I have envisioned it, would be primarily an opportunity for our professional staff to respond to and provide clarification and/or answers to questions or comments that may be raised this evening or between now and then. It is likely that between now and the 13th, most of those questions and/or clarifications will be presented, certainly presented to all of us. We'll, of course, post that on our webpage as well, almost our own FAQ, if you will. It's my desire, I think it's most likely the council's desire as well, that tabling this on the 13th, we could table it for maybe a week or so, but if we continue to postpone making a decision, irrespective of what that decision is, we're going to elongate this process to, you know, many, many months, probably.
But that is an option. I'm just...
It's absolutely an option, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pettish?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Mayor Burns, city council members, good evening. Attorney Rick Pettish, again, from Whitlaw LLC, on behalf of the Board of Education of Geneva, CUSD 304. We are here again to urge the council not to approve tax increment financing in connection with the Geneva Fox River Redevelopment Project area, commonly known as TIF III. Instead, we ask the city to partner with the school district to create a task force to encourage developers to continue to invest in Geneva, as they have in the past, to take advantage of this great city, a city with a rich and vibrant history, with great public services, including great city services, parks, libraries, and one of the highest-ranking school systems in Illinois. As many of you who attended the school district's public forum on May 3rd know, the district has been looking into alternatives to TIF. Alternatives that include tax abatements for properties that have been vacant for two years under 35 ILCS 200/18-184.5. Waivers for utility charges and permit fees. Grants and loans from the Illinois EPA and other state agencies for water and sewer improvements. And on our part, the school district would look at waivers and/or reductions to land cash contributions for any new residential developments within TIF III. We urge you to take us up on our offer and create this task force instead of creating another TIF district. TIF III will have a detrimental effect on school finances, but more so a detrimental effect on taxpayers of the city of Geneva and School District 304. As you may be aware, TIF I was also a downtown river TIF, touted by some as one of the most successful TIF districts in Illinois. It brought successes at the time, such as Geneva on the Dam, the condos at the intersection of River and Peyton Street, and the Geneva Place Retirement Community at State Street and Bennett. TIF I was in place from 1982 to 2005. For those 23 years, the other taxing bodies' taxes were frozen at 1982 levels. In 2006, we were finally able to realize the benefits of the TIF district. But now, much of TIF I is included in TIF III. So for up to the next 23 years, the school district will again have the EAV frozen at today's rates. This means that in only 10 of 56 years, has the school district been able to utilize the taxes from these properties in the traditional way. Taxpayers throughout the rest of the district have had to make up the difference. I have attached an exhibit from our public forum that shows the overlap between TIF I and TIF III. It's at page three of the handout. I would be remiss, in my duties, if I did not point out to you some serious legal issues with your eligibility study. Number one is boundaries. In my opinion, there are several problems. You have included ineligible properties in order to have TIF III be contiguous to TIF II for the sole purpose of sharing funds between the districts. Two, you have included vacant land parcels at the southeast corner of this conservation TIF in violation of the statute. And three, you have improperly used the river as a corridor to connect the properties at both ends of the district. This use of public rights-of-way to create contiguity has been rejected by circuit and appellate courts. And there's a difference between creating contiguity and taking advantage of the contiguity that already exists with rights-of-way. In addition to the boundary issues, in my opinion, your eligibility study findings of deterioration and excessive vacancies is flawed, as neither of these two is present to a meaningful extent and reasonably distributed throughout the redevelopment project area. Additionally, any TIF ordinance passed by this council must be predicated on a finding that the redevelopment project area on the whole has not been subject to growth and development through investment by private enterprise. Numerous properties within TIF III have been subject to substantial growth and development through investment by private enterprise without the use of TIF incentives. This TIF just does not pass the but-for test. Finally, the inclusion of numerous properties from TIF I and TIF III, I believe violates the spirit and intent of the TIF Act. Part of the incentive for the other taxing bodies within TIF districts is that after 23 years of frozen taxes, the taxing bodies finally are entitled to reap the benefits of tax increment financing through capturing not only the EAV that has increased during the life of the TIF, but the ever-increasing EAV that should occur naturally in future years because you have replaced a blighted property or a property that was bound to be blighted with an enhanced, updated property. But in this case, you have what's best described as double-dipping, an outcome never intended by the state legislature. And by double-dipping, I mean, you've taken that tax increment for 23 years, you're given a little break, and then you're going to take the next, possibly the next 23 years of increment. That's what I mean by double-dipping. These legal issues aside, again, on behalf of the school board, please work with us. We are not anti-TIF, and we are not anti-development. Work with us to find alternatives. We recognize that some areas within this proposed TIF III are ready to be redeveloped. Alternatives could include a smaller TIF area, or even two separate TIF districts, including only those properties that are ready for redevelopment. We are ready to consider other alternatives on the size of the TIF and also the length of the TIF. We hope these alternatives will address the interests of the community of development and the long-term detrimental effects on school finances and the taxpaying communities we all serve. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pettish. Is there anyone else joining us this evening? Yes. Yes, please.
We have a bevy of beauties at the door here, so I'll try to...
Yes, I warned them that this, they're obviously more than welcome to join us.
They're going to be a lot more interesting than me, I bet. I have some general questions I'd like to throw out about...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Sandra Ellis, 209 Peyton Street. I have some general questions I'd just like to throw out because, without benefit, I always feel like the council has such solid questions. I really wished we could have heard from you first. And I did appreciate hearing from the gentleman from the school board. But I still have some questions I'm going to throw out, and then I have a general comment. This isn't going to take as long as it sounds. First of all, declining EAVs. My home's gone down for probably the last three or four years, EAV, maybe even more. So I don't, and I'm outside of the TIF district. So I don't, and I'm outside of the TIF district. So what troubled me about the presentation by Mr. Dickinson is I didn't see any comparison done with figures outside of that TIF district. My guess is that we've had declining EAVs outside of the TIF district, and I'm, I'm surprised we aren't seeing those numbers from anywhere. That's a question. So the, the thing is, how are these different from the rest of the city? Everything he's presented, how about the vacancies in the businesses? How does that differ from the rest of the city that's not in TIF? The deterioration, it, it was all surface deterioration. I thought there should be more deterioration present than that. And how about the vacancies? Finally, I'm wondering, how do you measure the success of a, of a TIF? Is it by the EAV, or is it by some other measure? That's my question, so maybe that'll come up. It wasn't really mentioned in Mr. Dickinson's presentation. Another question is, what was the amount, approximate amount of taxes diverted from that first TIF during that 23-year period? We're talking about 30 million being diverted in this foregoing TIF III. What was diverted in the previous one? And where does the seed start of a TIF? Does it start with city council? Does it start with economic development? Does it start with the developer? I really somehow hope that comes out. Now, my, my comments about the big picture, tax, taxes. Will the taxpayer ever see Geneva property taxes stabilize? Here's what I see. Taxes of those residences and businesses within the TIFs continue paying taxes just like those outside of the TIF, so no relief for any taxpayer that happens to live in that TIF. I think sometimes people think that. Number two, all taxpayers will continue to see significant tax increases through 2025 to pay back bonds that built two new schools as a result of a 2008 referendum. I know you've heard this before, but we can't forget it. It was based on mysteriously and grossly inaccurate enrollment projections which the school board admitted but refused to investigate. No relief from taxpayers from the school district, which is 68% of our property taxes. Consider that TIF III will divert more than TIF I did away from the school district and be used for, it appears, other than all the studies that were mentioned, appeared about, maybe 20 million. Within a relatively small area. This will result in all taxpayers having to ante up more taxes to fill that hole left by the diverted funds. On top of the bond paybacks, we have to keep up with the school district to keep them in the style to which they are accustomed, even though the enrollment hasn't changed in the last eight years, we're still increasing their school budget. So, there's more coming down the pike. Don't forget, the library board is still pursuing building a new library which will require additional taxpayer funding. And if this isn't enough to expect of devoted taxpayers, what about the increasing water bills to finance the $12 million improvement? How can diversion of tax dollars to fund this TIF in any way be justified based on what we can realistically expect from Geneva taxpayers? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will ask if it's the will of the council for some clarifications. Do you prefer Alderman Kilbride to have such clarifications this evening, or do you wish to?
I can't believe I'm the only person wondering about these, so, you know, if I'm, I'm never a leader. If, if I'm bewildered, then I think other people are. If I have a question, everybody's had the question a year before I've had the question, so. It's up to you, I'll leave it up to you. I understand that it's opening a can of worms, very lively worms.
Anyone else in the audience?
You want to create, you want to define the distinction between a question and a clarification?
Well, well, as I indicated in my May 14th email, I suspect there's going to be considerable clarifications with respect to not only what we are presented with this evening, but certainly what has been presented and advanced over the last several weeks. I think it's important that, that we do so in perhaps cogent and less complicated way. I am concerned, and if others are as well, by all means speak up, I am concerned that, that if we engage in a lot of back and forth this evening, the crux of the issue perhaps becomes more clouded. I'm asking the council, thank you. Yes, Alderman Kilbride?
I understand that we're going to have our discussion next month, really, and our, our questions responded to. If there are people here tonight that have questions of some of the experts...
Absolutely.
Then, like for instance, Sandy Ellis presented some questions for clarification. Can she leave here tonight with her questions addressed?
We can certainly defer to our professional staff and/or the consultant to do so.
If I missed something, please let me know, and I'll, I'll try to respond to them all if I can. The first question I had was your question about declining EAV. The area, you're, first of all, you're right, there has been decline broadly throughout the city. It has been a deeper decline here, four out of those five periods. So, there's no question, there's been declines, but it's really the fact that it's, it's doing worse than the rest of town, or the values are declining faster, I think, is the, really the most compelling bit of that. Your point of broadly is compelling, and you're right, but it is, the rest of the city is doing better than this area. They're both declining, often.
Well, Mrs. Ellis, let him answer all the questions, and if you have additional comments, we invite you to join us at the microphone so that we can capture this information.
So, so that, that is true. Vacancy against the rest of the city, we did not systematically analyze vacancy in the rest of the city. The five to 10% is sort of my experience with, with healthy shopping districts, so I didn't, you know, we felt 25% was comfortably beyond any sort of normal, healthy retail district, and so I, we didn't do, and the law doesn't require, that is my, my whole job, but we just said, is this a normal level of vacancy? And the answer is, it's not, it's substantially more than normal. Whether normal is 10, or 5, or 15, we can, I'd be more than happy to debate that with anybody, but 25 is a lot, I guess, so that's what we got to, really. So it wasn't, but there was no, that analysis you're asking for did not happen. TIF measures of success was a question that you asked. Generally speaking, it's, it's a two-part test. In my experience of looking, looking back, you say, did the tax base grow? And I apologize, we haven't done forensics on TIF I, so I can't speak to the numbers. I suspect they did, and I suspect they did a lot, but I don't, I can't say that with any real facts. So it's, it's a two-part test. Did you, did the values go up? That's obviously the key quantitative test. And the second test, which is pretty important as well, is were the goals of the, of the TIF and the city council and the public achieved? So it's qualitative, you know? And clearly, at some level, I guess, and again, I'm speaking for the council, this is not their opinion, this is my inference, by considering another TIF, they weren't. The qualitative side wasn't met. Something didn't get done completely. You only half-finished the meal, is kind of my interpretation of how we're, why we're having this conversation again. If, if they felt like they'd done the job, the TIF had done the job completely, you wouldn't be thinking of doing another one. So that's, that's the qualitative side of it. But there's, there's a math problem there, and it can be done very readily, I just, we didn't, we didn't do that homework. But the values, again, I assume they went up, 23 years is a long time. I think you asked about, again, it was sort of a quantitative question about how mu- how much money did the TIF I collect over its life? And again, I don't know that, but that's readily knowable. I just don't, I don't have that figure with me. I can speak, you asked where does, where does TIF start? Again, I can't speak to the specific origins, I wasn't in the room when the first conversation was held in Geneva, but generally, my clients, again, it comes out of, there's a land use policy that's been set, I think in this case, it was a strategic plan passed in '09 that set ambitions for the downtown area. And again, that's usually the genesis, is a town says, we've got an area and it's not what we want it to be, and whether they do an economic development plan or some kind of thinking about it, and say, it's this and I wish it was that. And then someone says, well, can it be that? And the answer is, sometimes, no, without public money, it won't get there. You can't get to, you know, you want to go from here to here, and you're only going to be able to get to here, or you're not going to be able to get anywhere without TIF. And so that's usually, again, I'm not speaking about the particulars here, but that's often the conversation, and then the council has, a council, not this council, has to say, okay, is it important enough for us to consider a tool like this? And that, again, the answer to that question is yes, then you start to say, okay, what's the right tool and what's the right location? Generally speaking, TIF is the most powerful economic development tool in Illinois, and so it usually is at least talked about. If you don't choose to do it, you've got to at least think about it as a responsible, I think, anybody, professionals, councils, anybody, is to, so it's, I think that's usually the genesis, you've got an ambition, and you, and you want to think about how to make it possible, essentially. That's when TIF comes out of many, many councils that I've worked with. I think you made a couple of the points about the taxing bodies that I don't know anything about, I guess. And I think, I guess, maybe, maybe the summary on that is, you know, the way that the first TIF and every TIF works is at the point that it's completed, all that growth and value is released to the taxing body, so they do get, you know, they did forego taxes, or they forego taxing the value, they didn't really lose any money because of the way the mechanics of tax levies work, which people, you know, whatever, I don't necessarily want to go into the weeds of that, but the value does get released. And so, the tax base grew in TIF I, in the TIF I area, and all the taxing bodies are now levying on that value and getting the full taxes off of it. So this would again, sort of put a ceiling on that EAV for a time, but there is a, there is a, you know, the benefits were realized as contemplated in, in the act, I guess, and so that is helping to service the debt on the bonds that you mentioned and things like that, that those, that increase in value is doing its job right now. I think that was most of them, at least, if not all of them.
Mrs. Ellis, I'd have to ask you to please join us at the microphone so we can capture your comments on the record.
It's a very small comment. He did respond to the questions that I asked. I can't say they were very complete answers, though. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Any questions, comments? Yes.
Hi, I'm Sharon Jones, I live at 521 Franklin Street. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I tell you, after hearing your wonderful presentation and the school board attorney too, I had to come up and say something, and it was pretty much triggered back in the first presentation on some of the importance of having this TIF III and the reasons for it. And the thing that stood out from his presentation initially there about, you know, decide whether this TIF is, is really needed. Do we need this tool? I don't think we need this tool. I tell you, this town, people would die to live in this town. The appeal that we have right now to be here, I think based upon the beautiful setting, the Fox River, the environment, and two, the marvelous school system we have, is just outstanding, and number three, the fact that we are very historic, being a river town, and we retain that historicity as we are standing here in this room right here. Those appeals, people would love to live here. And I feel at this time, especially with that brilliant idea that the school board is proposing, to have a task force brainstorm about this from two taxing bodies. I was on the school board when you brought in the first TIF, three, 23 years ago, and of course, I didn't like it, as I think some of the other school board members here tonight would also concur to freeze taxes for 23 years. And to me, having worked for 20 years on building the River Park of Geneva along its banks, I just feel this area that is incorporated here, although I think it's a little extended beyond what it should be, that TIF lines, has a real potential right now. Each of them individually, whether it's the, the old bottling works area by our River Park, oh my God, the potential there and on the way over there to the park along the river, it, it, it just, it just has a phenomenal, and I think the creativity that would spring forth from multiple people, getting ideas together and support financially for these individual sections within this area would really take off and be a better solution than the one that has been proposed perhaps by the TIF idea right now, TIF III, okay? That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Anyone else? Oh, yes.
Okay, so, Lauren Nolan, 305 North First. I live in front of the bottling company. A lot of what you're saying is like over my head, but I do know you're talking about a piece of property that I live on. I just, my question is, how do you intend to make, I know everything else on that in particular block is owned by another group of individuals, one group of individuals other than my piece of property. So, how do you intend to make, how, what is the intent to make these, this group of individuals make the changes to said bottling company? I mean, how does that work? I'm, it, can you explain it in layman's terms, how that works to somebody like me? Are you going to give me a new sidewalk? I don't, I don't get it.
Sure.
Are you going to kick me out? I, you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, owners, you know, ownership and their motivations, it's private sector-driven projects generally drive TIF districts, so if there is, ownership is there, I, I don't know anything about the ownership, so if I'm saying, I don't mean to say anything disparaging or anything, I don't know what the deal is, but they've got to be, they've got to make a decision that they want to change the condition of the building, you know, and so they've got, you know, the government can't make you do anything to your building except keep it safe and clean and that sort of stuff. So, if that ownership decides they want to try to redevelop the property, and they determine that there are problems doing that, economic problems, it won't work for some reason. And I, again, I don't know anything particularly about that except what we can observe from the street, but they've got to be motivated fundamentally, I guess that's the short version of the story. If they, if the, if the ownership doesn't want to do anything and they want to just own that building forever and pay taxes on it, that is their right, and they can do that for all time, I think that, you know, absent extraordinary intervention. So, it's really up to ownership unless a council takes really way out there kind of thinking, and that's, I've not heard anything of that effect here. So it's, you know, you can fix up the environment, maybe that motivates them a little bit, but at the end of the day, it's their property and their money. The TIF is, it could help if they get that, get close, but they, you know, the TIF is a small percentage of the solution, it's not the solution, really.
Anyone else? Oh, yes.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Christine Kiefer, 210 South Bennett Street. And I, the only, I guess I have to say, I am not in favor of the TIF. I am enthralled by the idea that the school board is bringing forward. I think that's a wonderful vehicle to try to work together with the city to accomplish the common goals, but my property is budding up against the TIF district, and I guess I have concerns that, you know, it will in fact affect our property values, et cetera. Anyway, because it's sort of, you know, there's a few properties along Bennett Street that are not included, but the Mill Race Inn, the city property, the park, there's a one-and-a-half acre parcel next to property that I own, that's included, but we are not. So, I am not clear on, you know, what the ramifications are for us if we're not in it, but it's surrounding us, and I wonder if someone could address that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure. Hi, so, you know, I guess the TIF is designed, if the TIF succeeds, you're going to see reinvestment in that area. So I guess, you know, at least one, one version of the future is, it's a nicer place than it is now, and so you, you know, I don't know what that future is exactly in terms of the, you know, they build a new building, that you can walk, I, I don't, I don't know what that is, but if there's a redevelopment of some of that land, especially the stuff on, on, you know, fronting on the commercial streets, that could be redeveloped, you could be able to walk to a thing that you can't get to now. Again, I don't know, there's no development up front. The infrastructure in the area could get improved that would indirectly help you, obviously, you know, because the street's not in the TIF, the city can't pay for improvements in the right of way up front of your house with TIF, but they could improve the network near you, and so, again, to the extent that you have, and I don't know that you do, trouble with water or sewer, whatever, or it's not as good as it could be, that could get fixed. So, I guess my first take is, the only thing that could happen here is that the area next to your house would get better, I guess. I can't imagine, I guess, what, you know, what adverse outcomes could come. You could see redevelopment, I guess, or reconstruction, if you don't have construction, that, that might be a bad outcome, but generally speaking, you'd hopefully see redevelopment and improvement both in the public and the private properties near your house, and that would make your neighborhood nicer and better. That would be, I think, the, the future we're anticipating, we're hoping for, I'm expecting, I guess, that's, that's the plan, it doesn't, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, welcome.
Mary Xander, 121 Ford Street. I had just a couple of thoughts, and one is, in the, in the quest to have a greater equalized value, I'm worried about some of the people who live in that area who might have, it's kind of some of our affordable housing in Geneva, and that these places may be, these people may be displaced. I don't think we have too many really affordable places, and there are some of them in that, in my little neighborhood, in that TIF district. And the other question is... And the other question is, the people who own the properties and their economic ability to pay for things, is that considered in this? It seems as though there are some very wealthy owners here, and it seems as though the, our public would be supplementing their taxes or their portion of taxes to the school district when they may have enough finances to make these improvements without the TIF district. So those are my two questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Zander.
I'd like to answer that one, if possible. I think on the second question with respect to people's wherewithal, private developers' wherewithal to make investments, the TIF plan will not automatically approve any type of incentive to any property owner. Any investor will have to present to the city council a request for TIF funds, and the city council will have to vet that through the normal process for looking at any type of assistance that's requested. The city council has adopted an economic development policy whereby any request would need to be presented and shown all of the financials for the request, and the city council would have to buy into the request that it's needed, that the but for was needed and proven. So there would be no automatic incentive provided just through the adoption of the TIF. Second, for the first question, when you asked about increased EAVs, unless there is improvements for property, then those property owners would just expect the typical inflation that would occur for any property within the city of Geneva. And there's no plan to take any residential properties and change their use or their character. It is a conservation area, as stated earlier, and there is recognition that there's some homes there, and the city has already filed a statement that there's no displacement expected for residential.
Yes, welcome.
This isn't really a question, it's just a thought. My name is Carol Miller, 18th School Street, part of the area you're talking about. And I did talk to somebody after the last meeting, and it seems like there's other problems that aren't being addressed that no matter what happened with their property, and it would be, it's about the parking, looking at Mill Race, looking at any restaurant or business that have tried along State Street there to flourish. There's just really not adequate parking, and that there was a beautiful little restaurant, just impossible to get in and out of. And so no matter what money is being put out there, if that problem wasn't taken care of, it's, in a sense, destined to fail. I'm talking with things turning into businesses, but I know there's a lot of homeowners involved, too. But it's just, when you're talking about improving the land, using it for other purposes, bringing in revenue, again, thinking of Mill Race, that's a perfect example. Beautiful area, beautiful building, impossible to park there. And I haven't heard anything about plans to change that or to fix that, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Anyone else? From the dais, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Alderman Singer. A roll call vote, please.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Meladra?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
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 The public hearing is closed. We'll take a break before we begin the city council meeting. Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. The cameras are back on, the microphones are on as well. We kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Tara Burkhart?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Yeah.
Dean Kilburg?
Craig Meladra?
Here.
Richard Marks?
Here.
Jim Rodecky?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Tom Simoneon?
Yeah.
Ron Singer?
Here.
We have a full house. Ladies and gentlemen, today is Alderman Bruno's birthday. Friday was Alderman Rodecky's. Bruno and Rodecky lead us in a chorus of the Pledge of Allegiance. We want the current one, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Friday the 13th, huh, Jim?
Yes, it was. I was born on Mother's Day, just for the record.
It's your first and most insulting act to your mother for you. Well, thank you, in particular, our members of the GHS dance team for your indulgence and your patience. Before I begin with that, I'm gonna skip on the agenda to get some of these folks who are here for the consent an opportunity, should they choose to do so, to exit, but you're gonna want to stick around for this. It's cool. I'm looking at you. Let's consider the consent agenda. Are there any items, or excuse me, all items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be considered with one motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Singer, seconded by Alderman Bruno. Any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda, which is items A through V, as in Victor? Hearing none, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Meladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoneon?
Aye.
The consent agenda is passed, life is good. Where's our dance coach? Oh, there you are. Come on up to the podium, coach. Would you like to introduce yourself for everyone's benefit?
Yeah, I'm Amy Van Wagenen. I'm the head varsity coach at Geneva High School.
Now, coach, the first time you won the state championship was, that was pretty cool.
Yes.
The second time was like...
Really cool.
Impressive. And the third time's almost unheard of.
Yeah.
Is it unprecedented?
We're the first team to do it.
The first team in the state of Illinois to win three consecutive state championships. So some of the dancers with us tonight have never, ever experienced anything but a state championship.
Yeah.
Wow.
Our freshman, sophomore, and junior classes have only ever won state.
That's incredible. That's incredible. I think it's only appropriate that we meet the dancers who are with us tonight, and I think it's appropriate they stand up and say hello, introduce yourself. If you're a senior, tell us what your plans are next year. I know yours, Emma. So what do you think, coach? You want to introduce your team?
I do.
Wonderful.
Yeah. All right, why don't you come up?
Please, please do.
Great. So first, I have Julia Severino.
Yeah, Julia Severino. How are you?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And what year in school are you?
I'm a sophomore this year.
You are. So two more and you'll get out of high school without ever having to worry about second or third place.
I mean, that's the hope.
That's the hope.
That's the plan.
Awesome. Is it difficult, I mean, how many ladies try out for the dance team?
There's quite a few. I think this year we had around thirty.
No kidding? And you select how many?
Sixteen out of our city.
You do? Okay, cool. So it's pretty cool as a sophomore to be in the varsity squad?
Yeah, it's really cool. It's a good experience. Really fun to be involved with the high school.
I bet.
Yeah.
And the end of school is coming up.
Yeah, it is. That's exciting. We got finals and then summer, so.
When are finals? Next week?
Next Monday through Wednesday.
Is that right?
Yep.
Do you need any help on the finals? Because this group here is, they've been through it all, man.
I might.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for being with us.
We have Mary Kaper.
Mary. Welcome.
Thank you.
What year in school are you, Mary?
I'm a senior.
You're a senior?
Yeah, two days left.
Oh, I thought Friday was the last day.
No, Wednesday.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's the old days.
That's the old days? Maybe because I had detention, I had to stick around two more days. Wow. So what are your plans next year, Mary?
I'm going to Michigan State.
Really? What do you want to study?
Business.
You see Mrs. Stith back there? She's a Michigan State grad.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I'm really excited.
Are you? And when do you ship out for school?
I think August 27.
Oh, nice.
So, yeah.
She's on the dance team there, too.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Whoa. They offer scholarships and stuff for?
No.
They do not?
Yeah, they don't like recruit or anything. They just hold a tryout.
Come on, Stith, what are you gonna do about that? So you'll be able to perform at all the major events?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Well, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Katie Wagner.
Hi, Ms. Wagner.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. And what year in school are you?
A freshman.
Freshman?
Yeah.
Wow. So far, so good?
Yeah.
Not a bad way to kick things off, right?
Right.
Wow. And how many more days of school for you?
I have this week and then three days of finals next week. Sadly.
Any other freshmen on the team?
Yeah, there's two other ones.
Oh, okay, so. That's pretty cool. Great experience?
Really great.
Fondest memory?
Yes.
What is your fondest memory?
Oh. Probably just when they said that Geneva Varsity Dance Team won state this year.
Wild. And the police escort was pretty cool, wasn't it?
Very cool.
I heard they were actually going after Matty Emma, but since she was on the bus. It's easier to wait for her to get to town.
Yep.
What are your plans next year?
Be on the dance team again?
Good answer. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Susan Danifrio.
Hi, Susan.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. And what year in school are you?
Sophomore.
Sophomore. Two championships right in a row.
Well, I actually wasn't, I didn't do dance team last year.
Oh, you didn't?
Yeah, so this is my first year.
It's even better.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
What do you love most about performing?
Just that I get to do it with, like, my best friends, you know? It's cool.
It is cool. Are you ever nervous in front of the crowds, or?
Yeah.
Do you actually see them and hear them, or do you just zone out and?
No, I usually see them, and it, but once, you know, once you start dancing, I don't really think about it.
Are your mom and dad and brothers and sisters there present cheering you on?
Yeah.
Are they the loudest?
Yeah.
Do you tell them not to be so loud?
Sometimes.
Do you?
Yeah.
Who's worse, mom or dad?
Dad.
Oh, well. Is your dad here tonight?
No, he's not.
Oh, well, he's probably watching, though. Now you're in trouble.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nicole Rennie, who's also a senior.
Ah. Hi, Nicole.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And what are your plans next year?
I'm gonna go to Iowa State.
Woo! Cyclone. Who said yay for the Cyclones? Oh, you're a Cyclone, too? That must be no echo. No, I wasn't talking, I was talking to the coach there, Kelly. Wow. And what draws you to Iowa State?
They have a lot to offer there. I'm doing engineering there. They have a really good school there.
Oh, yeah.
Really good dance team. It'll be fun.
Are you gonna be on the dance team, too?
Yeah.
Oh, no kidding? So you already know you're on the team?
Yeah, we had tryouts a few weeks ago.
Oh, wow, that's pretty cool. And engineering, what's that? A lot of math?
Wouldn't understand.
I wouldn't understand.
You know, the train.
The train, that's what I thought, yeah. Hundred and twenty trains a day here in Geneva. And when do you ship out?
I think around August 16th or 17th.
Oh, that's early.
Yeah.
Do you have to be there early for the team?
No, I think it's just when freshmen move in.
Oh, the orientation and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Next, we have Casey Murphy.
Hi, Casey. Are you of the Murphy gang that lives right down the street?
No.
Okay. That's good. And what year in school are you, Casey?
I'm a freshman.
Freshman. Great experience so far?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah? What's your favorite class? Besides dance?
I don't know, probably English.
Really? Well, let me ask you something, Casey, because I've asked this of the other ladies as well. What is so different between dance today and dance years ago?
Um, I'd say it's a lot more competitive now, and there's a lot more skills.
It's a physical sport, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you come off the dance floor, you're exhausted and...
Yeah.
Are you as tired then as you are now?
I'd say I'm more tired then.
Oh, yeah? That's good. Your family cheers you on?
Yeah.
Are they here tonight?
No.
It's good to see that support. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Matty Emma.
Matty Emma.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm well. How was prom?
It was fun.
It was a good weekend, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It was awesome. And everyone returned safely and?
Yeah.
Life is good and?
Life is great.
So how many championships do you have under your belt?
I have three.
Amazing. And you've been on the team all four years?
Yeah. Well, dance team all four years, yeah.
Yeah, and next year you're going to like a correspondence school, is that right?
I'm going to Iowa State University.
Are you gonna dance as well?
No, I didn't try out.
What are you gonna study?
Elementary education.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Do you want to come back to the district, maybe, and teach?
I mean, if I got offered a job.
Hear that? Yeah, there's the, exactly. So you're pretty much an empty nester at home now, aren't you?
Yeah.
Wow, all your brothers are away at school and Chris is...
They'll be home tonight, actually.
They are home tonight?
Yeah, I think they should be home, like, when I get home, they should be, like, Alex and Nick should be home.
Oh, god, don't go home, then. Wow. So what are you, you're gonna elementary ed?
Mm-hmm.
And you want to teach the lower levels?
Mm-hmm.
Why, what inspires you to hang out with?
I don't know.
Those little people.
I've always just, like, loved kids, and then, I don't know, I did, like, TA this year.
Oh, you did? What school?
Western Avenue. I did TA for third grade and then also for preschool. And then, like, that just kind of, like, reassured the fact that I definitely want to be a teacher.
Did you TA with one of the teachers you had when you were at Western?
Yeah, Mrs. Coke.
Oh, no kidding.
She was my first grade teacher.
Oh, my goodness.
And all my brothers TA'd for her, also.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't know that. That's awesome. Where do you get all your skills from? Your dad?
For, like...
Dance?
Dance?
Yeah.
My dad? No. I mean, not my mom either, so.
I'm gonna have to edit that out. Well, congratulations, Maddie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nikki Sarah.
How are you, Nikki?
Good, how are you?
What, you're in school?
Junior.
Oh, my goodness. Now, last year I teased you about heading to Orellio's afterward for free pizza.
Yes.
Did anybody show up?
I don't think so.
Tonight's the night.
Oh, yeah.
It's awesome. So three championships.
Yes.
What's next?
Uh, take on the world.
So forget senior year?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you're gonna do that. What's your ambition in life professionally? What do you want to do? Don't say go to Iowa State.
No. Um, I don't know yet.
That's good. You shouldn't.
Yeah.
How's the family doing? Good?
Good, yes.
Awesome. What's your message to the younger folks in town regarding competitive dance and focus and dedication?
Um, hard work beats talent.
Who told you that?
This one.
Oh, no kidding? Coach W., huh? Wow. Can you believe that? Wow. And you believe that? That's awesome. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Barely senior next year on the team.
Yeah.
Oh, you, really?
Yes.
So you're the, like, the leader by default? Wow.
I know, it's weird.
That's pretty, a lot of pressure on mom and dad. That's really exciting.
Yeah.
Anyone else we haven't met yet?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you, Nikki.
We have Alexis Pender.
Oh, who's this, I'm sorry?
Alexis Pender.
Ah, how are you, Alexis?
Good, how are you?
I'm well. And what year in school are you?
I'm a sophomore.
Sophomore? Having fun?
Yeah, I love it.
Is sophomore year harder than freshman year?
Mm, I think it's easier, actually.
Really?
Yeah.
So you haven't taken the ACT yet?
No.
It's a brilliant story about. Wow. So, you're inspired by the upperclassmen?
Yes.
Do you inspire the freshmen?
I hope so.
And next year, do you know of any young ladies who are in eighth grade are gonna be trying out for the team already?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, you do?
My sister, actually.
Oh, no kidding? Oh, you did? That's gotta be tough.
Yeah.
Yeah? Well, this is a... What do you think, Mr. Clerk, any questions?
I think you've covered it.
What message do you have for the younger, uh, dance dancers in the community? Because you see, I mean, Mike, we were at the, some event at the high school and all the little kids were coming in for their dance recital.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I just think, like, everyone should be good role models for the little ones, look up to them, like Nikki said, hard work beats talent.
And how long have you been dancing?
Uh, since I was two.
Two?
Yeah.
Wow. That's awesome. Do you have a favorite dance or?
Not really, jazz and lyric color are probably my favorite styles.
Very cool. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Kinsey Sheridan.
You got a fan club there, Kim. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Doing well. And what year in school?
I'm a sophomore.
You are. Same questions to you. How long have you been dancing?
Since I was two.
This is like a common theme here. Did you, did you start dancing because you wanted to dance?
Um.
Or was it to burn off energy?
I don't know, my mom just signed me up to have, like, neck.
Is mom here tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, there she is. But you, obviously you fell in love with it.
Yeah.
What do you like most about it?
Um, like, just getting to, like, meet new people and, like, share a common interest.
So that begs the question, when you're, when you're competing for the championship and you're surrounded by other teams, is, is there a friendship there because of the common bond, or is it, are you so focused that the friendships come after the competition?
Probably come after the competition.
Is that right? And who did you, who did, who came in second this year, I guess I should ask that?
Lake Zurich, yeah.
Who's that?
Lake Zurich.
Oh, Lake Zurich, yeah.
They were really good.
Were they good? Wow. So you're gonna obviously compete again next year?
I think so, yeah.
That's awesome. Just made the coach nervous. Well, thanks for being with us, Kim.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next we have Lindsay Gerbeck.
Hi, Lindsay.
Hi.
What grade are you in?
Um, I'm a sophomore.
Lots of sophomores.
Yeah.
So lots of depth on this dance team.
Next year we have eight, we have eight girls who will be juniors next year.
Wow, and of course Nikki has the senior.
Yeah.
Holy moly. So why do you love dance so much?
Um, I don't know, just like being able to, like, express yourself and, like, if you get, like, a new skill or something, it's exciting.
Are you nervous about, do, do you get every, do you really get butterflies before performing?
I mean, yeah, I think everyone does, but like, I mean, once you get out there and once you first hit, like, the first move, it kinda just, like, goes away.
Yeah, that's what Rodecky says when he's out dancing at, at, uh... Let me ask you this question. Watching the performance, you know, what do we know, right? But you know when you may be, make a slight error, but nobody else notices, do they?
Yeah.
Are you, are you tough on yourself or kind of a?
I mean, kind of, well, I mean, most of the time for dance, like, you know the dance so well, especially with, like, coaching stuff, we do the dance so many times that it's just stuck in your head besides, like, turn sections where you never know if you're gonna get it or not, so, I mean...
So when you turn, if, if you've made a, a, a oopsie daisy, does, does the young lady next to you say, "Come on, Gerbeck"?
Um.
You don't have to answer that if you don't. And what's that girl, Nikki Sarah? That's the real question.
No.
But you, obviously you cheer each other on.
Yeah.
No pun intended, I mean, you, you motivate each other.
Yeah, definitely, we're all just, I feel like we're a very, like, motivational team and everyone just pumps each other up.
That's cool. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The team member who's here tonight is Amanda Werner.
Hi, Amanda.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
And what grade are you in?
I'm a freshman.
Freshman? Awesome. One year under your belt, huh?
Yeah.
You gonna stick with Geneva for a while?
Mm-hmm.
Are you?
Yeah.
And how long have you been dancing?
Uh, since I was two.
Really? It sounds like some sort of massive punishment going on in Geneva where you have the... Wow. And what do you like best about what you do?
Um, probably getting to, like, meet a lot of new people and it's challenging, like, learning new skills and stuff is fun.
Does it, does, does your dedication to dance and the commitment you have to invest with respect to time, does that help you as a student because you have to juggle your time so well?
Yeah, I feel like it helps you, like, manage time better and, like, be more organized, too.
So you're straight A's?
Uh, right now, yeah.
Are, are you really?
Yeah.
Wowzer.
You may wanna explain to the mayor how that feels.
I got a lot of semis. Your child does not, yeah, hmm. So what message do you have to the, uh, the junior high schoolers who have seen you succeed as a freshman?
Um, I don't know, like, Nikki said, like, hard work really pays off and, like, try your best all the time.
Are, are you your?
Can I answer the question?
It does. This is a weird question, but are you your worst critic?
Um, probably.
Probably, does that just come natural with performing?
Um, yeah, I guess. I mean, like, I, like, you always wanna try, like, to be the best that you can be, and that's, like, I guess.
Do your teammates say to you, "You did a great job"? What, you know, don't, what do you say, "But you sometimes feel like I could've done better"?
Um, sometimes.
How do you respond to your teammates who feel that way when you think they've done great?
Um, I don't know, that's hard, I mean... I don't know.
Are you allowed to talk to the upperclassmen?
Yeah.
And the entire team's gonna be with us on Friday morning? As soon as we confirm?
Yes, I, yes.
Do they know?
Not all of them.
Okay, never mind.
You can tell them.
No, it's all good.
Okay.
We'll let the coach surprise them. Well, congratulations.
Thanks.
And thank you very much. Do you wanna say anything?
Um, yeah, I think this year has been, this is my third year as the head coach at Geneva.
Now, let's get this straight, third year as head coach?
Mm-hmm.
And you've won three state championships?
Correct.
So contract negotiations are gonna be brutal.
Um, but I think this year's been the best because of various reasons. I think they're, they're obviously really great dancers and they work really hard and everything dance-related, they're awesome at, but they're also just really, really great people and they're smart and they had a goal this year and last year, too, that they wanted to do a community service project every month, so we, and we did that. So they wanted to make sure that they were giving back because we have a lot, so we just, we delivered Christmas presents, we, like, helped out a lot, and, and that was all them. They wanted to do it, they wanted to get out there and help, and they're just really kind to each other and really, like, I, I work with a lot of dance teams through my other dance jobs that I've never seen a team, and maybe I'm biased because they're, they're my kids, but who are just like that kind to each other. There's a lot of, like, cattiness, I feel, and not with them. So I'm just really proud of them for a lot of reasons, and I think I couldn't have picked a better team, and I don't think there was a more deserving team to win state the past few years, so I'm just really proud to be the coach.
Well said. And this is almost anticlimactic now, isn't it? Ladies, you know what is behind this thing, don't you? That's a picture of Tom Rogers. Ladies, would you care to unveil? I'll move it in the center for you. I'll drop this thing, you wanna help step? We'll get this out of the way for the photos. We're gonna center this, ladies, so everyone get your picture. Oh, yeah, seniors on there. Knock it over, we only made one. Will notice the budget savings, if they put in two thousand fifteen, we did a dash. I actually texted a copy of the coach's savings, that's what we're gonna do.
Thank you so much.
This sign will be posted up at corner of twenty-five and Main Street.
I'll look back and see what I call.
Hi, thanks for that.
I'm sorry.
No, I thought he was out too far.
See you, guys. Right. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments tonight? I hope not, since we already did a consent. Yes. Item nine is, A, is to consider acceptance of fiscal year 2015-2016 Fourth Quarter Goals Status Report.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Sino. Any questions or comments regarding the status report of the fourth quarter goals? Hearing none? Seeing none? All in favor of accepting the report as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item, oh, gosh, look at that, folks. Item ten, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills per pa, uh, payment total three million seventeen thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-two cents.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual line items that add up to that total can be found in tonight's packet on the Geneva website.
Motion by Bruno to pay the bills as presented and available on our, in our packet and on the website. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marks. Any questions or comments? A roll call is in order. Mr. Clerk?
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
John Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simmonian?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item thirteen is, uh, new business. Is there any new business this evening from any member of the audience and/or from the council? Alderman Cummings.
Um, I would like to recognize that we have a new Olympian from Geneva. Ben Kanute, while we were all sleeping, or whatever, on Saturday night, I believe, was in Japan racing one more race for the US Olympics in triathlon. And there are a number of qualifying races and it's a point system, Kevin may know more about this. You accumulate points on how well you do in the race and, and some other things, and, um, Ben, who is twenty-three years old and, and came up through the Geneva school system and then went to Marmion and then on to the University of Arizona and graduated in fourteen, um, Ben came in seventeenth, he came in second American, and, uh, a few hours later was awarded one of three slots for the three-man team for the US team for the, uh, triathlon. He is the youngest member, uh, the other, other two, one is, I believe, twenty-six and the other is thirty.
Whoa.
Yeah. And, um, a little history on Ben, he was two-time Junior Elite National Champion in two thousand eight, two thousand ten. Uh, he grew up racing this multi-sport madness, Kids Triathlon, was what it was called back then, maybe it still is, uh, out at Delnor. Since he was, you know, I don't know, six years old, eight years old, something like that. He was, locally, he was the first, uh, American to cross the finish line in two thousand fifteen when we had the ITU, um, championships in Chicago. And for your runner, for you runners out there that are watching and listening, um, after biking, and this was a very technical course, bike, bike times were a little bit slower, but after biking, twenty-six plus miles an hour for twenty-five miles, almost twenty-five miles, uh, Ben got off the bike and ran a thirty fifty-two ten K, which is a sub-five pace, and I'm, I'm reasonably certain he would say that running isn't even his strongest of the three.